I'm here. You all should have received an invitation from St. Charles Bormento Catholic Church. Our 175th anniversary is coming up, and we are celebrating with a festival this Sunday. Everybody is invited. There will be free lunch, a beer tent by the Knights of Columbus, buck of beer, fun-filled activities. We've got bounce houses for the kids. We appreciate you allowing us to close off the street out there. The bishop from Kalamazoo will be here to say Mass at 11:00 a.m., so we expect a pretty large crowd in the 500 or so range. Again, there's kids. There's going to be live music with Delbert and Kate Haber will be there. And the other thing is, we're giving away $5,000 in prizes that day, and those are some of the raffle tickets we're selling there, but they are being pre-sold by the school right now as a fundraiser. So I just wanted to stop by and say thanks, because the city is always cooperating, no matter who is having an event, no matter where you're at in the city, and so we always appreciate that. And just to make sure that we hope that you stop by. It's from 12 to 4:00. And we've got big tents going up, so that you know you can be in the shade if we have a sunny day, and we sure hope that we see a number of you there and some of the public there have fun.
Congratulations. Thanks, John.
Happy birthday, Mayor!
Okay, we're done with that. Julie, not that funny. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none removed in our consent agenda, these I would consider to be routine. Take them in one motion unless somebody up here or somebody in the audience wants it removed for further clarification. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have our minutes of August 26th and our closed second minute of August 26th, EDA minutes of July 24th, rec board minutes of July 10th, VPU minutes of August 7th, cell central power agency minutes of July 11th, VPU financial report for July, our financial report for July, MRF statement for 2024, Aquatic Nation regarding Public Utility Week, and a memo from me regarding some board appointments. Those are the items on our consent agenda. Anybody have any comments? Wish anything removed? Anybody up here? Okay, what do we do next? Motion approved?
Motion.
Thank you.
More.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. We have motion in support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That's approved. Bills and accounts, $755,573. You spend like a donkey at Taylor John. Keith, any questions?
Just to note a couple of large item, ticket items, largest of which are street and sidewalk work combined for a number of projects in the neighborhood of $300,000. The MML liability, pool insurance, annual payment in the amount of $150,000. We had a couple of large repairs at DMAS with the hoist that lifts the vehicles into the three bays. We replaced or repaired those. Have a couple of vehicles and indoor vehicle outfits. And so, yes, it is, it was a lot, much larger than normal period in which we had inhoices.
Question. Motion to carry bills?
Motion.
For yet. For it? Who said motion? Passes support. Take what you want. We have support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Bills are paid. City manager, for Keith.
Thank you, Your Honor. You'll hear about the election in a little bit on the council agenda, but just a reminder that absentee ballots are available for the November election. And these, and interested residents may contact the city clerk's office for those. The election is coming up, just under two months away, on Tuesday, November 5th. And early voting takes place between October 26th and November 3rd at the DIRT Center. A number of events, as I noted at the last meeting, that are coming up this weekend. We have the Public Shredding Day from 10:00 to 1:00 at Heritage Park. For the public, members of the city residents and the VPU customers can dispose of their, securely dispose of their personal documents in a, in a secure way, and that is being sponsored by the city and VPU. Secondly, we have Apple Fest, which is in two weeks, on September 21st. Julie noted this morning that we're up to, we're full. We are starting to turn people away. We're creating a, a, a list of, a waiting list for vendors at 221, different vendors and participants in that event, so that would be the largest ever. The weather is looking promising. Couple, a week later would be Oktoberfest on Friday, September 27th. Similar lineup to last year with the German bands, dancers, food and entertainment, taking place on South Monroe Street from 5:00 to 10:00 that evening. And then the following day, household hazardous waste collection at the fairgrounds. So a number of events coming up that are sponsored by the city and VPU. I wanted to note, because they're out right now for both Labor Day and Patriots Day, which is in two days on September 11th. But we just want to recognize the Coldwater Koanis Club for their ongoing project of the placing the American flags across the community. Members of the Koanis Club and volunteers for Boy Scout Troop 433 distribute over 750 flags during the six designated federal holidays. So they'll be picked up later this week on Thursday, and they'll be out one more time this year in recognition of Veterans Day in November. So we'd like to thank the Koanis Club and the Boy Scouts for their project and dedication in that community event. Then a couple of construction updates. Work continues on the renovation of Waterworks Park. We met with the contractor today, and that's moving forward as planned. The park is closed, and we asked people to avoid use of that area. And paving should begin soon on the parking lot, on the paved walking path, soccer field there at the corner of Bennett and Waterworks. And, and new lighting is planned for that as well. And the work itself should be completed by the end of October. Work now is, mobilization is underway. You'll see work start tomorrow. There again, we met with the contractor today on the street milling and paving project for North and South Willowbrook, and Fawn Run, North Drive, Anderson Drive, and Lynn Court. And so over the next couple of weeks, you'll be, that area will be milled, it will be paved, and they anticipate final paving by the middle of October. But just know that that's a very heavily used and trafficked area. It'll be congested, but it'll be really nice when it's done to have the east side of town repaved in those areas, on those streets. And one other update, just so happens that the contractor for those two projects is also involved with Western Meadows. That work continues. They're looking at wrapping that up by the middle of October. The sanitary sewer is in, the water is in, storm water is going in this week. And so this is for the new subdivision of Western and State Street. And then you'll begin to see the road and curb and gutter being installed here in the next couple of weeks, with the intent of being fully wrapped up by October 18th is the current completion date. So that will be about the time in which the Western Avenue is, and patch and repaving is, is completed as well. So that, there will be a couple of days in which, when that is being paved early in October, that will re-initiate the detour around that construction project to give an opportunity to finish paving and the patching of Western Avenue. And with that, that's my update for tonight.
Next, Keith. Questions for Keith? Comments? Nah.
Move to my group. The manager's point is supported.
Thank you, Chad. We have motion. We have support to approve the city manager's report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Manager's report accepted. 13, a memo from Sean LaShaba regarding establishing an absentee voter ballot counting board.
Name, Mayor, Household. I'm here for you tonight to request to establish an absentee voter counting board. An absentee voter ballot counting board is a group of election inspectors that specifically deal with counting or absentee ballots. The absentee ballots will have their own tabulator. They will be separated into their separately, one, two, three, and four, in their own bags, just as they are on election night. The reason for requesting this is because the city of Coldwater has had an increase in requests for absentee ballots. Our absentee ballots, we're almost having more absentee ballots to process than in-person voters. But that being said, even with the state authorized and changing the law to have the nine days of early voting where people can request their absentee ballot involvement in person, it's not affecting us on election day in a positive manner. We're still getting more. As of the day that I created this letter last week, we had 9,169 registered voters in the city of Coldwater. 2,229 of them request ballots be sent to them.
What, how many registered voters?
9,169.
Total population of about 13,000.
In the city of Coldwater. So 2,229 of them request that ballots be sent to their home for them to go absentee, and most of them, I'm assuming, especially for this election, are going to be bringing their ballots back to us. So the Election Commission is authorized to establish an AB counting board for this purpose. But as the city does, we hope we bring everything for transparency purposes before the council, so the public knows. John Petsko is one of the election inspectors. He's worked for me in the past, and he understands how cumbersome it can be when you're trying to input ballots in between in-person voters. In this past election, this August election, Ward 3 was consistently busy throughout the day. They are also our largest ward that has the most absentee ballots. So when you have people going through the line consistently, you're trying to intermittently put in ballots. And then that takes for a long night, because you have to wait until in-person voters are done voting before you can continue putting ballots in, which this past election wasn't until after 8:00 at night.
Yeah, the 220 was, they, they had to, everything. I mean, it's just, it, this is a, my own recommendation is that, yes, something like this is going to be. Questions for Sean?
Who determines and how determines our board, this counting board?
The Election Commission. They say who our election inspectors are going to be, and they will also say who's going to run the Election Commission. I have my group of people that they always work doing the AD ballots. I've already talked to my lady, who's usually the one in charge of that there. She's been wanting this for a while. I've been wanting this for a while. We've just been really hesitant to do it for...
So that's not approved by a board or council?
The Election Commission is who approves the...
Who's the Election Commission, I don't think that is.
The city attorney, the city clerk, and the city assessor.
Gotcha. I didn't know that.
So.
It's by state law.
What exactly does this do then?
This helps alleviate so in-person voters who want to hold their ballots in person, they can go to the tabulator and put their ballots in themselves. The AD counting board will have their own tabulator that is dedicated just to putting in the absentee ballots.
Should fill out our home form and drop it?
So that, for the people that don't want to show up and drop it in, we have an AD counting board that will drop it in for them.
So you, that's mailed to you, and then you get just five minutes instead?
Yes.
You could start.
But now they'll have their own dedicated tabulator instead of waiting in line for in-person voters to be done voting, so that we can put in the absentee ballots.
So that's, yeah. So that's more efficient. So as AD didn't run through it, then we know person A didn't also do some ballots?
Yeah, we have lots of checks and balances. We want to perform reports every day, including on election day. So every time we receive ballots in, it's in the system, and the clerk always checks. If somebody comes in, they'll go through the line, and if you only scan their driver's license, it'll say, "Sol and Sol was issued an absentee ballot." See the clerk. And then the clerk has access to the live database, where we can check and make sure that that person hasn't already returned their absentee ballot.
And absentee ballots have to be in by the time of the new rules, or not?
Um, absentee ballots, they can be turned in up until 8:00 p.m. on election day.
So they could come in at 8:00, collect, and vote, and then turn in their absentee later?
We would know, if they, we would know that.
And I'm just all about the evenness and fairness about, I'm just going to throw one issue, because I didn't look into this a lot, just a little bit. Because people can get very upset over elections and the processes and who supports what. Is this organization, are we 100% sure, did we know, did we look into this, or vet this company that's giving us this, this grant?
The grant is going to be separate. That's number 15.
Is this...
Right now we're talking about establishing an AB counting board or two different...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
But do you have any questions about the AB counting?
Oh, Rachel.
Any other questions?
They're asking us to adopt or not. Adopt resolution 2474.
Motion to adopt.
Support Scott. Thank you, John. Final questions? Nah. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Sean. Before dealer Keith regarding authorization of an annual contribution towards the maintenance and management of the Aquatic Center. Keith?
So I'm sure many of you are familiar with this request, and it's been, been discussed for a number of weeks and months. But for the sake of just disclosure and to go over, make the request in full, I'll just give a little bit of a background. There again, the school district, Coater Community School District, and the city of Coldwater have been investigating ways in which to reduce the annual financial losses. To the school district that they incur for the operation of the Robert Brown Aquatic Center. And in doing so, when discussing with them what that might look like, their current operating losses are in excess of $300,000 each of the previous three years. And just to give a little bit of context or background, the city currently contributes $50,000 to their annual operation, so that's in excess of, or in addition to the loss, the $300,000 loss that they have. And we also contribute approximately $50,000 towards a debt payment for the bonds that were used to construct that facility. With the group that's been discussing this over time, led by the mayor, in the review of the community, the Coater Community Schools financials, that team approached Mr. Jim Brown and the Brown family. He's the son of Dr. Robert W. Brown, who will financially support the construction of the, of the city of the center, and sought a, sought an investment or contribution from, from the Brown Foundation, which they were most generously offered. And so a plan was then developed to, to assist the schools in funding, future funding of the center, and what that might look like. And then I list them, number of bullet points relative to $125,000 annual contribution for a minimum of five years from the trust, a donation from the trust of up to one point, or just over $1 million for repairs to the Aquatic Center, an additional annual contribution from the city of Coldwater for $25,000, which is one of the things that's identified in the resolution tonight to seek your approval for, to go to a facility maintenance fund, to be managed by the schools for future repairs, pledged by both the city and the school district for a 50-50 match on the hiring and dedicated aquatic director position to manage, promote, and provide programming for the center, and establishment of a committee comprised of city, school, and community members to guide that director position and the operation of the center. So as you've heard, the Branch County Board of Commissioners last week committed to a $25,000 grant for 10 years, I believe was the term, to contribute to the Coater Community Schools for the maintenance of that facility. And now we're asking that the city, based on the negotiations that have occurred to date, authorize our $25,000 contribution, as well as the commitment to cover the cost of, just half, up to half of the cost of a new aquatic center director. There would be an agreement that would be developed to then bring back to you then to what, that would stipulate what the provisions of this agreement or arrangement is, are between the city and the schools. That would be forthcoming, and we'll come back to you. And we wanted to get these approvals in place, in which to populate that agreement. And specific to the aquatic director position, the expectation is, and the agreement would stipulate, that if there are cost savings over time, that the city's contribution towards that director position could be reduced if revenues are improved, if sponsorships are received, and, and the overall cost of the, of the reduction of loss to schools can be, to be realized. Think I covered it all. The mayor has led this effort, and with the school board president, Dr. Lake, and just like to thank all those that are involved, and the Brown family. And we'll open it up for any questions on, on requests before you, and then that will be illustrated in an agreement that will come back to you in the future.
Just for clarification, the aquatic director would be in play in this industry?
Current. That's what being, what is being proposed.
What happens in five years when that amount from the trust drops off?
It's over there. It'll be reevaluated. You know, that was... They, they'll be reevaluated. It may continue. It would, could be reduced depending on the financials. I suspect they would continue support, but we want at least to know five, so we have a period of time that we're guaranteed, as opposed to year by year. So it was more us asking for that commitment versus asking for 20 years, which we don't.
So we want to show progress, for sure, and, and the ability to hopefully turn the, turn the financial situation around, or at least reduce the...
And is the school's plan, as far as the new director, the direction of the new director, to aggressively go after marketing and using and charging? I mean, I've seen school activities where, I'm not saying charge a swim team, but if you have a swim team, you're going to have to pay some rent towards it, because it's not being used for other functions, so.
I don't, I think, we asked today again to the school superintendent to ensure they rely on this committee to direct, monitor, and oversee, push this person. This person's the key. We haven't had that for the last decade. No question. We gave a 10-year contract to the school and kind of forgot about it. And COVID had, there's a lot of reasons, but I don't think it's tough on you guys. There's no magic answers, and we're just very appreciative of the Brown family stepping up. And to be honest, I don't know what we'd be doing. So we're taking a gamble on this aquatic position. We're contributing, but I'm pretty confident that we will get a good portion of that money back. And we've got a formula worked out. If the loss is less than such, we get 50% when there's a formula worked out, but it's a gamble. But we'll see.
But some of the responsibility would be one to seek sponsorships. Obviously, I know a lot of the social media commentary has been about the availability and hours of the pool. Memberships, of course, this arrangement with the county, the schools, and the city are now establishing a flat fee for everyone, both for our rec programs and the, and the schools' aquatic center. And so it's intended to drive additional attendance and sponsorship, and monthly revenue, and being able to then staff it. I mean, staffing's been a, an issue too, as to when and how often it can be available for use.
Is there enough money now to repair everything and get it up to work, to be known as?
Many of those million dollars are things that are not now, they're the next two to four years. So we're a little confident that there were major repairs in the next two to five years. They're taking care of this million dollars that's for stuff in the past. It's for stuff right now and moving forward. They see coming up. So we're hoping that by that time, more things need in six, seven years is $25,000 from us than the county have built up, and so the school doesn't have to write those checks, right?
It's a 10-year, it's a 10-year-old facility. It's coming up on its 10th year anniversary. And a pool is a very corrosive environment, and so we know that there are HVAC replacements and repairs. There are the pool plaster repairs. There's other building maintenance that need to be made, the boilers. I know one of which the school's already replaced this current fiscal year, and this is going to cover, reimburse them for, reimburse them for those costs that they've already incurred. And that's specific, I know. But yeah, it's meant to bring it up, bring the building up to speed again for going forward.
The facility spends $120,000, $30,000 of your electricity alone. Paul had offered to give free electricity, but we told him, no, we can't do that. But it's, they're just huge expenses there, whether you... Well, it's cost money. We know that without them, it's all... I'm sure there are better plans, but the best plan we can come up with is buy us some time. So urge everyone to support it.
Well, this here seems to be a plan to get dug out of this and expand as a more of a community asset, which we know it is. I'm certainly think it gives us five years to make a difference. And we may be back staying, okay, well, now it might be very much the same, might be very different, but it gives us that five years. So that one, I would approve, or would move to pass resolution 2475. Support.
Good afternoon, Sean. Certainly a big deal. Earlier discussion, I won't cut this short, but it's very positive, I think, the fact the Brown family, as Keith, they're doing it, very hand in hand. We approached them reluctantly, but they were very generous, so. No more questions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have a last five-minute dinner for public comments. If anyone would like to address the public, they may be there to address us. They may do so now. Yes, could you just compensate your name, please?
Ted, good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Words, and I'm here just to introduce myself. I tried to make it around to all the cities and townships before the primary, but I ran out of time. So I made it through the primary. I'd like to thank any and all of you that voted for me in the primary. I'm on the ballot in November as the candidate on the Republican side of the ticket for our local 35th district house representative seat. So a little background on me. I've lived just south of Quincy for the last almost 20 years now. My husband and I have been married for 24 years. We have four kids who are almost all grown now. Our youngest is a junior at Quincy this year, and I have two kids in college and one that is married and has two little ones. So I'm delighted to be a grandma. Feel like you should have got to do grandparenthood before parenthood, because it's way more fun, but you can't put the one before the other, unfortunately. So a little more background on me. I grew up in Hillstone County, so I have the benefit of representing the 35th district and living about 20 years in both parts of this district. So my parents still live on the farm that I grew up on. After I graduated from Waldron High School, I went on to Michigan State University, received my degree in agriculture, and have been involved in agriculture since then, and also some in education. We own a farm just south of Quincy, and we raise chickens for Miller Poultry. We raise about 600,000 chickens a year. And then I've been serving as the Branch County Conservation District manager for the last, over the last year. So I have a website, jenniferwards.com, Facebook page where you can find more information about me. I also have some literature. I'm glad to stick around after your meeting if you have any questions. And thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Good luck. And other public? Any other public comments at this time? Seeing now, do we have any unfinished business at our level? Any new bills, other than we have one agenda item that we handed out? Any other new bills? Can we pull through to that? Seeing now, we've got Sean, you take this one, too?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm here for you again, requesting a grant agreement for rural and non-heterial election infrastructure grant program, resolution number 24... infrastructure grant program, Resolution Number 2476. The Center for Life and Civic Tech is awarding up to $20,000 dollars for non-rule, non-metro election infrastructure. This grant money is for clerks to use to buy the necessary equipment that they need to do, the outreach that they need to do to reach more voters, sending out their ballot applications and now applications to request ballots, sending the ballots out. It can be used for anything that clerks need it to be used for. The city of Coldwater, we've long needed election equipment. We slowly ask for it. We've always been very fortunate where we've been able to buy maybe one large piece of equipment every year or get something. But right now, this grant closes the 13th, it was in July, I just found out about it last week, but it started in July, it closes September 13th, sorry. And again, we can use that money for anything that we need. So high-speed tabulators, Ward 3, I would really like to get Ward 3 a high-speed tabulator. It works twice as fast as the regular tabulators that we have now. Along with having our AB counting board and the election laws that have changed, we can also start voting up to eight days earlier, prior to the election. I don't feel like the city of Coldwater is large enough to do that. But if we had an additional tabulator, we could use that tabulator here at City Hall for people to come in and vote maybe the month before the election if they wanted, or we could start tabulating the money for the election. That could also be used as a backup tabulator. If something happened at the nurse center and one of our tabulators went down, as it is right now, I'm not really for sure what we would do to, we'd have to hand count, everything would have to be done by me at that point. But if we get an additional tabulator, we would have a backup and we could also use it for other purposes that it's made for. I would also request, we do need an additional laptop. Laptop would be a backup laptop in case one of our laptops went down. We need that. And then we also have, there's touchscreen voting available and it prints out your ballot. We have one of those. We never really used it until this past election and we had like 130 people use it. It's actually a fantastic tool because, you know, during the last election, if you get a paper ballot, people can accidentally cross load. With the touchscreen, you can't. You select one part, you select one ballot and that's all you get, there's no other option. So that is available to anybody and we would use this grant funding for that. You can use it to any election inspectors, you can use it to buy pencils, pens, whatever you need for the election. That's what I'm looking for.
So it's just a grant to you and you use the vendors, you only would?
Yes, and we have to use a certain, certain vendor. No, we don't have to. We would use, the state of Michigan goes through election source and that's the vendor that we would use for everything that we would get. We would still continue to use the same vendor that we use now. And this money, like I said, I learned about it last week, but quickly before it came down here. So the city of Fraser got $36,000. Some clerks shared how much money they got, some clerks didn't, they just said that they got it. $36,000. Madison Heights got money. Walker City, here it is township. La Bonia got $142,000. Riley Hills got $16,000. And that was just from Keith asking me probably around 4:30, quarter to 5:00, how many other clerks have gotten it and me putting the question out there. There were 16 responses, but I didn't have the time to write everybody's responses down. But, you know, I looked into them a little bit too, and they also funded a lot of stuff that we needed during COVID. I don't know necessarily, I didn't look back to see if the city of Coldwater took advantage of that grant application at that time, but I know that a lot of other clerks did.
So this, the grant supplies the money, but any purchases, not through them, it's through the state?
It will be through the state-approved vendors that we currently use right now.
We're liking pretty funny, I think. So any, any entries in making a motion? So moved. Resolution 2476, John.
Support.
Thank you. Chad, we have motion and we have support. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Any finally, any other new business? Not? We're adjourned.